Can't hear you, Madam President.
Okay. You can't hear me?
No, we can't.
Okay. James, all the councilors in here?
Sure, let me, uh, let me go down the list here.
Patricia. Patricia, go mute. Okay, um, good afternoon. I have item number eight and I will know by Monday. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items number nine through thirteen. Uh, item number nine was developed from a previous meeting. This is special for modification at the restaurant, 700 North Solana Street. We held it. Uh, Counselor Hogan, the second district counselor, said he was okay with it. Uh, and so I don't know if any of my other colleagues had any questions. If not, we're gonna call that ready. All right, uh, item number ten is an amendment to the application, uh, for CDBG. Someone here to explain for the councilors who may not have been a part of the discussion.
Uh, Counselor Michael Collins, Commissioner of Neighborhood and Business Development. So, uh, we are holding a public hearing, uh, public hearing, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, five o'clock. We've done outreach to make sure people are aware of it. Specifically, this is, uh, the CARES Act allocation of the Community Development Black Grant Funds. And, uh, what we're talking about, uh, the, uh, the five million is not correct. It's actually two million, uh, nine hundred thousand and change. I will, um, I'll, I'll get that to the, uh, where, where it says it at the bottom. Um, all right, my apologies. I'm reading it too quick because my, uh, my screen froze on me. So where it says five million, that is the program year forty-six funds that were approved in the spring. And the, um, uh, CARES Act money is the two million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, that's mentioned in the bottom of the item. Uh, that is what we're holding the public meeting on and, uh, one hundred percent of those dollars need to be related to COVID expenses.
Uh, any questions from number, from number ten, any of my colleagues?
Yes, I have one question. So after, after we vote on this, or if this is approved, how fast will the public be able to get their hands on the money?
Uh, so what we're working towards is, uh, because this is also paired with a intermunicipal, uh, government agreement, uh, contract agreement. Uh, and we're working towards the beginning of August for the funds to be available for the, uh, emergency rent assistance. Uh, and as quickly as possible as well for the funds that are, um, uh, related to, uh, uh, support for uh, through the urgent care program, uh, and, and the variety of different expenses that we've talked about within there. So that's, that's the goal. Uh, some of that's gonna be up to HUD, but, uh, we're, we're working to have everything is available in, in August.
Commissioner, I was gonna say you might as well continue through eleven and twelve since you already started, but all those are related.
Uh, so forgive me, my, my screen has frozen. I'm gonna guess that eleven is the, uh, intermunicipal, uh, agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, the intermunicipal agreement. Uh, this is relative to the CARES Act as well, about one point two five.
Yep.
Don't use the amount.
Uh, so the intermunicipal agreement, uh, what we've found is that, uh, Department of Social Services with the county is, um, uh, absolutely the most efficient partner in being able to get this money out into the community. We've been working closely with, uh, Sarah Merrick, uh, who's, uh, the commissioner of that, uh, that department. And, uh, uh, they have, one, the ability to front the money, which is something that our nonprofit partners would struggle with. Two, the ability to make sure that there is compliance with HUD's regulations, that, uh, there were no other forms of, uh, money that was available to the recipient. Uh, and they can do that by, uh, plugging into, uh, the state's DOL system and checking on unemployment records. Uh, so we'll be partnering with them, uh, for about, uh, one and a quarter million on CDBG funds. And, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of emergency solution grants, the ESG funds.
And, and to be clear, this is for persons who may be affected, uh, as a result of COVID. In this, in this case, let's say landlords who had tenants who couldn't pay rent. Uh, this would, this would be, this would include that. And I believe this may have been what Counselor Allen was asking. I couldn't hear that much. Uh, but I would assume that this would be some of the payments that would go to landlords for persons who couldn't pay rent.
So that, so th- these are specifically payments for back rent for qualified neighbors, correct?
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. And I have absolutely no opposition to a government entity handling that money as opposed to a nonprofit. I, I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions.
I do, Counselor Bay. I wanna just find out, so Commissioner, I asked, I think I asked last week, is there an income, income threshold for this money?
Uh, there, there is an income threshold for this money, uh, and it's, uh, a lower income threshold for the ESG funds, which is why we put more money into the, uh, CDBG funds, because that will make it, uh, so that the, uh, CDBG funds go up to eighty percent of the, uh, uh, average median income, uh, where, uh, ESG is, I believe, at fifty percent. Uh, so we'll, we'll be able to reach more money, or more, more, more neighbors, uh, and constituents with that, with that CDB, uh, CDBG fund.
And that's the, that, that, that level, but the next level, what about middle income? What about middle income folks? Are they gonna actually qualify for these funds as well?
Uh, unfortunately HUD, uh, is strict on the income requirements. And so, uh, not, not through this, we're, we're not able to, uh, utilize HUD funds for it. Uh, that, that is a very significant concern, Council President.
Council President, this is, uh, Deputy Mayor. We have to follow those HUD income guidelines. Mike, if you can get the councilors a copy of those, uh, the, uh, AMI and HUD regs, uh, for this area, that, that'll give them an idea of what the, um...
Yeah, and, and, uh, so councilors, that did hit your, uh, email inbox, uh, late afternoon yesterday.
Okay.
Commissioner, Helen, this may help with your question too, but the, so the guidelines changed as of July first and the, the, um, the numbers went down. So are you guys basing it off of, like, July first going forward? Or is it gonna be pre-July first, being that this happened before? They changed the guidelines.
So that, that's a question that we're gonna need clarification on HUD from, uh, because these funds are able to go, uh, uh, able to, they are able to go backwards. So we're, that's, you know, the purpose of paying the back rent from this date.
Cause in that case, then some middle-class folks would, would qualify.
Right. We, we don't, we, we, uh, we're playing it conservative right now because history, uh, would, would indicate to us that we must use the current guidelines, but we are gonna pose that question specifically to HUD.
Right, that I understand. So do we have anything, I know this has nothing to do with this, but do we have anything in place or any plan to try to address the middle income?
Uh, so we're, from a cash standpoint, we have yet to identify a source of, uh, of funds to be able to do that. From a eviction standpoint, uh, we have been having a, um, meeting every three weeks with the volunteer lawyers. That includes, uh, not just myself, but also Deputy Mayor, Code's Department, our law department, uh, Patty Lynch, who, who handles people that are in distress with housing. Uh, and we're, we're working actively to figure out what that initial stabilization will look like, uh, once Housing Court reopens. We did get notice that Housing Court was adjourned again until August nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question, Counselor Bay. Uh, uh, Michael, will there be a person, a contact person in your office that will be doing all the work in regards to this, in case constituents? I know Counselor Allen and Counselor Bay both evidenced concern about this. I know we'd like to deal with one person, obviously, uh, in case we get any calls from any of our constituents asking questions about this.
Sure. So from, uh, from, from the counselor's standpoint, uh, I, I would say, uh, that, um, uh, Sue McMahon is, uh, who operates our ESG grant, uh, she does the most amount of work with, um, uh, with people that are housing vulnerable on the grant side. Um, uh, so she would be fine on that. Uh, always, I'm available to any of you, of course. Uh, for the public, uh, we are identifying specifically DSS is, is creating a single, um, single point of entry phone number, uh, to be able to share all of this information, and we will jointly publicize that, uh, specifically share it with two-on-one as well. Uh, because two-on-one is, is, uh, the resource that the community, uh, within the community, especially within the human service community, uh, uh, is really utilized to be able to, uh, be at the central point for information for anybody calling in.
Okay, Michael, as long as you, well, why don't you email us, uh, Sue's direct line? Um, you know, I'd like to have one point of contact for issues like this, somebody who's familiar with the, exactly the guidelines. And who to get those people, how to get those people the money as quickly as possible.
Counselor, I'd, I'd be absolutely happy to. I, what I would say is, uh, she's having a knee replaced right now. So let, let me get, uh, her recovered before I, I let her know I shared her contact with everybody in the world.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, why don't we just put together a one pager for the councilors for, um, for their purposes for contact? And then also the public number once that's established for them to provide to their constituents. And, um, Council President Hudson, just to the point of, um, middle individuals, this is a dilemma for us. Um, our, our major source of resources is HUD, and as you know, thankfully, as Counselor Helen pointed out, the guidelines did go a little bit, um, which for like a family of two does get to about forty, forty thousand dollars, a little over that. But, um, it is a problem. We've been talking to our philanthropic community as well about this issue.
Thank you.
So, so I got a question, uh, just a clarification, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Collins. When we talk about rent, um, does that include those that are, um, also under mortgages as opposed to rent? Or are excluded?
So this is specific to rent. Foreclosure is a different issue. Uh, we did actually look at, um, uh, putting some money towards that, uh, towards counseling on that and, uh, Home Headquarters, uh, we, we've been in constant contact with Home Headquarters. And Carrie Quaglia informed us that, uh, they have some money through the Attorney General's Office to assist, uh, uh, people that are facing foreclosure. Uh, so that, that's not a, uh, an area that we put money towards with this particular set of funds.
Okay.
Counselor, would you?
Yeah. All set.
Uh, there's no more questions on that. Commissioner, thank you. Uh, item number thirteen, Madam President, it's my last item. It's a resolution, uh, for the charter for the council to seek outside legal counsel. Uh, for certain projects we may need done at times for, for periodic, periodic counseling. Uh, I believe most of us are aware of it. If not, if there's any questions, please fire away. Otherwise, all of my items are ready.
Thank you, Counselor.
President Hudson, I'd like to commend, uh, Counselor Bay for his tenacity and his perseverance in this issue.
I'd like to, um, to also commend to say that as well. Thank you, Counselor Bay, for, for staying tenacious on this. And, uh, for those councilors who are unfamiliar with Ronnie White, I just wanna say, uh, I've worked with him a lot and I feel, uh, very, very comfortable, um, with this election. And I'm, I'm very grateful that we've been able to push this forward as a team. Thanks to the clerk and Counselor Bay for, uh, championing this forward.
Could we co-sponsor, Counselor Bay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure, me too.
As well.
Me too.
Sounds like everybody.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alrighty, are we all set to move on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Counselor Rudd.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items fourteen to seventeen. Fourteen is the travel item, which, uh, the auditor had some back and forth. It seems like we're pretty close. There's like one more minor change. So my thought is that we make that last, um, adjustment and then reshare with the whole council group. And to the extent anyone has, I'd like to share it by, I don't know, midday tomorrow with the adjustments. And then any questions that, if there are additional questions, we can do them on Monday. But I think it should be ready to table on Monday is the plan. Does that sound fair to Adria or anybody else? Yeah. Um, fifteen is, uh, essentially us approving the spending for the Kraus-Marshall Business District. I think Dave Menkowitz is on. If anyone has, Dave, maybe you could just, is the, is your budget essentially unchanged from what you planned and essentially how you typically spend it? Or have you had to rethink things in the face of, um, a pandemic?
The, uh, budget is unchanged. Um, so it is, it is the same budget that you approved back in April.
Okay. Any questions from councilors on the Kraus-Marshall ninety-three thousand? Okay, I'll call that ready. Same thing for item sixteen. It's the Downtown Committee. I think America is on the line. Um, America, same question for you. Is, is the budget the same from what we were seeing a few months ago? Or have you had to adjust anything based on recent events?
Yeah, uh, the downtown special assessment portion, uh, remains unchanged. We, um, downtown special assessment makes up about sixty-five percent of our revenue sources, uh, with the other thirty-five percent coming from events and parking operations. So, um, we did, uh, cancel our Arts and Crafts Festival scheduled for July, uh, so that had a financial impact. Um, as well as we have a, a couple of parking lots that we expect to be underperforming as well. Uh, but again, those are items that, um, typically when we make the reductions would come out of some of the marketing funds. Uh, we have started, um, a fundraising campaign as far as contributions to help us fill that gap. And then we'll have a couple of other events, um, like an annual meeting plan for the fall and again in the June. So that'll fall within the same fiscal year, so, uh, that should help us make some, some of the shortfall.
Okay, any questions for America and the Downtown Committee for their nearly a million? And questions for America or Dave on the outside beyond their budget while they're here? No? Okay. I'll say both of those items are ready. Then we have item seventeen, which is, um, this three oh seven, three oh nine Holland Street, which, uh, this went through the committee and passed. Um, I guess who, who wants to do the description of?
Good afternoon, councilors. This is David Clifford, Commissioner of Assessment. Um, what, what this item is, is, um, uh, the city quit claiming a reverter clause that was put in the deed on a property that we sold to Home Headquarters back in the early two thousands. Uh, the reverter clause was that, uh, if it hadn't got renovated within a certain amount of time, it would, it would revert back to the city of Syracuse. However, uh, the property was demolished. The property was then sold to Habitat for Humanity. They wished to sell it to the land bank or, or turn it over to the land bank. Uh, but, uh, the land bank won't accept it while this reverter clause still exists. The clause really is, is meaningless at this point because the house was demolished in two thousand and four.
Okay, so all we're doing is getting rid of the, the claim that was based on the house that's no longer there. And that enables two different parties to transfer the ownership.
Yes. We don't even own the property at this point.
Right. Any questions on this item? All right, I'll call that ready, and those are my items. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items eighteen through twenty-seven. Um, these went through DPW committee. We'll start with item eighteen. We could just get an explanation of that. It's, uh, the extension with Bergman Associates.
Good afternoon, councilors. This is Neil Burke with DPW. Um, item eighteen is, Counselor Green stated, is a standard contract extension. Um, this is part of the fiber optic trunk work that the city's undertaking to repair and replace the equipment that serves the traffic control center. As well as this is what our interconnect system is connected to, um, with all of our connected signal equipment and some of our cameras and those other things. So we wanna, uh, replace this aging equipment, which is past the useful lifespan. And we've been slowed down by, um, some national grid permitting and some other items similar to that. The design work is pretty much complete. We're just waiting on some final steps. And we ran out of time as we were using our term agreement, our standard term agreement, to get this done. So shouldn't be much longer, but, uh, we wanna make sure that our consultant has ample room to run here and, and get this done for us.
Any questions on this? Okay, thank you. Item nineteen, uh, is in agreement with Republic Parking. So either Cory or Pat wants to explain that one?
Yep. So, uh, this is basically amending our agreement with, um, Republic now called Reef, um, to, uh, manage our, the garages at Washington, Madison, and Center Armory. And this is just a short-term, we anticipate this being a short-term extension because we're RFP-ing the, um, garage operator slot. Um, the RFP should be going out within the next four weeks. So we anticipate this will be just a short-term, uh, extension of our agreement with, with Republic slash Reef.
Cory, the larger RFP, how long of an agreement are we?
Um, so we're, that's one of the, one of the things that's holding it up is that we would like to have the operator install, uh, revenue equipment. Um, and so revenue collection equipment, so that we can upgrade the way in which we collect payment in our garages. Um, and so we're just having, that's one of the details we just need to figure out is what's the length of time that we think is reasonable? Um, if somebody's going to be investing in that infrastructure and equipment, what's a reasonable length of time that we would, um, give them for, to, you know, recoup or recoup the cost for that, for that investment? So, I mean, I would imagine it'd be in the, you know, three to five-year range. I don't think we're looking for anything more than that.
Any other questions on this?
Uh, Pat or Cory, um, who, who does the periodic inspections for our garages? Is that engineering or do we hire somebody to do that?
So we, we have an agreement with CNS to do, they do an annual, um, it's an annual structural assessment. I think every other year they go more in-depth than they do, um, you know, they don't do an in-depth one every single year, but they do an evaluation of each of our garages each year. And so that, that generates a report that we have that identifies some of the structural issues that we have. Do you mean the publicly or privately owned garages?
No, our, I mean, our garages.
Yeah, our garages. Yep, yeah, CNS. Um, so Pat, both Pat and, and Kelly Hagerty from Engineering work on that together.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and we actually just received the report, I think, Friday, last Friday, so I'd be happy to share it. Counselor Green, I know you've expressed interest in seeing it. If there's any other councilors that would like to see it as well. Um, they do a, yeah, CNS does a good job of identifying what needs to be fixed and what priority it needs to be fixed and what the estimated cost would be. So it's pretty.
I have nightmares about the old north garage sometimes, so.
What, what's the old north garage?
It's not there anymore, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. It's like, is there another name for these garages? Hopefully they haven't existed long enough to switch names.
No, it was an interesting thing. You can.
Yeah.
John Kapans probably remembers it, but that's about it. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this, Hen? Okay. Items twenty, twenty-one, uh, are purchases of DPW equipment. Commissioner Robinson?
Yep, twenty is, uh, appropriating funds for us to buy a, a sweeper for our sweep and flushing operation.
So I know one question that I think came up in the mini-meeting, it might be more for Frank Caliva, but how, does this relate to Band-Aid box and is this company compliant? And if not, what's our long-term plan for that?
Yeah, I would have to defer to, uh, either Frank and/or Cory on that.
Uh, we are in the process, Counselor Frank Caliva, we are in the process of, um, reviewing all of our procurement processes and reaching out to anyone that we have a direct contract with from the, the city, um, to ensure that they're in compliance. And we are working with the county to ensure that anything we purchase through the county contract, so, um, are, are in compliance. So we're not there yet, but we're working through it.
Commissioner, how, how, how many do we have? How many sweepers do we have?
We have a total of six right now.
So this would make what?
Excuse me?
What would these make? Would that, would these, seven or?
Uh, we're actually replacing one, so that would still make six, if I'm not mistaken. Rich DeVesti, if you're on, you could elaborate a little more on that.
Uh, yeah, uh, this is Rich DeVesti. Can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would replace, um, our natural gas unit that's a two thousand and eight. We used to have natural gas pumps there. We know, at the DPW, we no longer have natural gas pumps. We have to get fuel for it at, um, at Centro. So we'd be replacing that unit, and the new unit will be a diesel unit that we can fuel right here at the DPW. Make it, make it a lot more convenient.
So this is the first time in twelve years that we got a new one?
Oh, no, no, we have, uh, we bought one last year. We have, uh, our units are two thousand and nine, twelve, thirteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We, we buy them every couple of years. We skipped a few years, but, um, twenty nineteen is our most recent.
Well, they're four of them.
Wow, it should be about ten years.
This is the one for the third council district, Counselor.
Well, we would like to see one. That's, that's good.
We're trying to get up to, uh, to, to having six and one spare. I sent, uh, I sent Counselor Rudd, I think I copied you on an email regarding our, our, our fleet of sweepers. So, uh, I don't know if you got it or not, but check that out. And that should explain exactly what we're trying to do in the next year or two.
Okay.
That information's helpful. The only piece of information that's not on there that would be great is the useful, the expected life. Cause like, I just, I, I can see the dates. The dates actually look reasonably, I don't know. Like, that's where I don't know the useful life, so I'm kinda looking at them. I'm like, oh, they don't look as old as I thought. But then, and then you see the hours of use, but then it just needs some measure of what the hours and the expected date of replacement should be.
Gotcha. I have, me and Rich are working on that right after this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
You're all set, Counselor?
Any questions on item twenty or twenty-one?
Okay, twenty-one is, uh, do you want me to talk about it, Counselor?
Yeah.
All right. Well, twenty-one is appropriating funds for our, our store department to purchase a peeler as well as a, a payloader. We talked a little bit more in depth about that in our, uh, committee meeting. I think Rich DeVesti can tell you what is replacing, uh, if anyone wants to know.
Yeah, good afternoon again. This is Rich DeVesti. Uh, the peeler is gonna replace a two thousand and two unit. Got almost a hundred thousand miles on it. Um, and the payloader is replacing one that's actually already been out of service. We need, we need to, uh, we need to get one back in.
Any questions on this? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Items, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three nail Complete Streets.
Neil Burke again, uh, DPW. The Complete Streets items are, um, you know, this is to authorize funding for our Complete Streets program. This is used for a variety of pedestrian, mostly pedestrian bike, um, and transportation projects. So that can range from bike lanes to some small sidewalk work to neighborhood greenways and routes to school. Um, so this is, uh, an item that gets put to good use.
So Neil, any, any conversation around putting maybe, uh, thinking about putting bike lanes around maybe Valley Drive and, you know, Glenwood, anything like that?
Um, yeah, I, I imagine, uh, ex-counselor Bob Doherty must have, uh, been knocking on your door. He, he's been arguing for more bike facilities in that area. So we have the, the city's bike master plan, which lays out a very grand vision of a long-term strategy. And there are more bike facilities in that area. There's none that we're looking at right now, but that doesn't mean that there aren't smaller projects that we can take a look at. And see if we can get things done with it, especially if it's just things like striping or minor adjustments, absolutely.
Well, I, I, I think, I think, uh, uh, third district folks think alike. I didn't, I did not talk about, I just, I just felt like it was something that.
I, I know that intersection at Glenwood, South Ave, Valley Drive is a, is a real tough nut to crack. And, you know, these funds are pretty limited. We can't, we can't tackle that, but there might be other smaller items, which is exactly what this program's for to take a look at.
Salina as well, yeah. Alright.
So Neil, there is some sort of plan and you looked at the plan and you're in agreement with the bicycle plan?
Yeah.
The bike master plan that you said was extensive and all that?
Yes, the bike plan was completed in twenty fourteen. There was a, a lot of input, uh, citywide from neighborhood groups. There were consultants who came in. It was part of the city's twenty forty plan. So it's very comprehensive, it's, it's very in-depth, it's worth the read, it might put you to sleep. But, um, you know, it's available on the city's website if you want to take a look. Some of those are really big projects that need a lot of funding to get done. But there are other smaller items, um, that we can always take a second look at. And a lot of the, the dollars in this Complete Streets round are already obligated, you know? We've been talking about speed humps for, it seems like forever, that's everyone's favorite topic. So, um, there's not that much wiggle room here, most of these dollars are programmed. But again, if anyone has specific projects they want to take a look at, happy to chat more.
And you would let us know any specific projects specifically in our council districts beforehand?
Okay, thank you.
To your point, I was hoping that he would send out a list of where the projects are going to be so that we can all be aware of them.
Sure, um, I think that was council president. Yeah, a- as this proceeds, um, after this meeting, we can, uh, sit down and, and list out more items that we plan on this summer.
Thank you.
Stop giving all the money to second district, will you?
You got it.
We are great neighbors, but we need our own.
Thanks Neil. Okay, items twenty-four and twenty-five, Commissioner Robinson, we could have you come in.
Yep, twenty-four, twenty-five is us purchasing, uh, basically two pickup trucks with, uh, snowplow equipment for our crew leaders. Right now, we have a few crew leaders that don't have, uh, access to a pickup and/or, uh, snow removal on those dead end side streets. So they rely on others to do that. So if we gave them access to, uh, equipment, then we can get that done in tiny fashion, so.
Any questions on this? Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Items twenty-six and twenty-seven are engineering items. Mary, do you want to start with twenty-six, which is sewer, uh, project from upstate?
Morning, afternoon, counselors, Mary Robinson, city engineer. Um, twenty-six is for upstate medical university. They're building the upstate health and wellness center project. And as part of the project and the county's one-on-one sanitary offset requirement, we are having them line an eighteen-inch combined sewer and two sewer manholes, um, along East Water Street, the three hundred block.
Any questions on this? Okay, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, we're amending our revocable permission with Anadaga County for the green infrastructure, um, project. That's been going on for a number of years. Um, we've just added a couple of projects to the list for twenty twenty. And also added some provisions because they are going to be installing a separate storm sewer in Grand Ave. Which will then, we will take ownership of after we accept the construction.
Any questions on this item? Okay, thank you, Mary, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items, uh, twenty-eight through thirty-six. Obviously, they all passed committee, but if Commissioner O'Faves here and can just go through each item for some of the counselors, maybe that weren't present for the committee meeting.
Absolutely, um, actually, number twenty-eight, I'm going to defer to Steve Harris, who is supposed to be on the call to discuss that one.
Yes, good afternoon, counselors. This item was an item that was pulled last session. Uh, it is, uh, an annual program to use our parks, uh, for urban agriculture. At Seals Community Center, Elmwood Park, and we want to expand it to Rand Tract. They, we pulled it last time because Cornell was still working on their, uh, guidelines for working in the COVID environment and they have shared those with me. They are, uh, the standard best practices that everyone's following with social distancing. Uh, increasing of, of online, uh, online sessions as necessary in the winter. It involves interacting with youth at the garden, uh, and students from Corcoran and Robert School.
Excellent.
Okay, alright, so item, uh, twenty-nine?
Okay, um, I would like to say a lot of, a number of these items are items that under a normal summer date would be, um, agreements and waivers that we would be requesting right now to begin utilizing right away. That's obviously not the case right now because we're not running much programming, we're not spending much. Um, however, I'd like to get these through so that, as things move so quickly these days, it's, it seems like it's a, a day-to-day decision with the, the state office whether something is allowed. So I'd like to have this ready now so that when we get to a point where the recreation department can, can begin functioning again, we're ready. So item number twenty-nine is our, an agreement to run background checks for anybody working with our vulnerable populations.
Okay, and ju- just to quickly, you know, go off of that. Now, I, I understand, obviously, a lot of these camps, as it stands now, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to. But we have policy and procedure and things in place so that if we get the green light, that we'll obviously follow.
Absolutely.
Practices that, that state has outlined with, you know, different, uh,
Yeah, whether it's ratio or capacity or social distancing or spacing, yeah, we would absolutely follow anything, any guidance that's out there. So number thirty and thirty-one are both related to when we get more into our community centers, if and when they open back up. That would be for, this is an agreement to contract with the instructors for, um, senior zumba, African dance, golf. Any of those types of, um, or also, um, basketball officials for our basketball program. So that's what item number thirty and thirty-one are for. Item number thirty-two, I do have, um, I believe, I didn't look, there is supposed to be somebody from Galaxy here, but this is, and it, we're requesting, um, an extension of the agreement that we started last year with Galaxy Communications. If you remember, we entered into an agreement with them, they advertised very heavily, I should say, too, to, for our benefit. To ice skate at Clinton Square as well as Sunny Crest Ice Rink, we had a record attendance year at both of those. And that is to a financial benefit to us, we had, um, high revenues, record, record revenues, especially at Sunny Crest. So we would like to extend that contract for at least one year right now with Galaxy.
Okay, and again, I have a, a note here from the committee meeting and I can't remember, I think maybe it was Auditor Maroon that had asked, you know, and I guess we wanted someone from Galaxy here to discuss and make sure that, uh, if we're going to contract with them, that they're following the ban the box legislation.
I did confirm that they do.
Okay.
And then also, is anybody from Galaxy on here?
Yes, uh, Jordan Prudie here with Galaxy.
Okay. So Jordan, I don't know if you heard that question, but, uh, we'd like confirmation that you guys be on the box on your employment applications.
Yes, confirmed.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Galaxy since we have them on the call here? Okay, um, item number thirty-three is, uh, and thirty-three and thirty-five are related. These are for us to be able to purchase very specific items, thirty-four, thirty-three being seeds, specific seeds for our greenhouse. We can't just, uh, you know, we can only get them from a certain vendor, whether it's a marigold or a geranium or something else that I don't know because I'm not a gardener. Um, and thirty-five, we have a variety of playgrounds within the city. They come from very specific manufacturers, you cannot get parts from just anywhere. We have to get them from the manufacturer themselves. So this is a, um, a waiver to purchase replacement parts from those specific vendors.
Okay.
Um, item number thirty-four, some kind of, oh, go ahead.
On the seeds, do we have any like summary of how much we spend in the greenhouse in a year and what we produce in the greenhouse? And if there's ever a point at which we would be better off just buying a bunch of flowers for neighbors?
Um, I can prepare that, I don't have that prepared today, but we, we do, I mean, because it's in our budget. We haven't purchased anything this year. You know, we were very conservative this year, but I can absolutely get that, but it is cheaper, I think, it, it's always cheaper to go from seeds. Um, because we have the ability to do that, we start doing it in January. But is your, your thinking is can we start to purchase them for neighborhood groups?
No, no, my question is just, do you have anything that shows either, I guess, like the efficacy of the greenhouse overall? It seems like we spend a fair amount of money there. Can you just show what that translates to in, um, like output for the flowers? And then how that compares to what we would have to pay if we bought the same amount from a private nursery, greenhouse?
I, I can work up some kind of comparison there or history of the last few summers, not including this.
It just seems like an area that I'm not totally convinced it's, uh, making tons of, saving us tons of money. So if we're, if we are, that's great. And if we're not, maybe we need to think about what should happen to make it more efficient.
Okay.
Especially given the extreme nature of, uh, our finances at the moment.
Right, and like I said, we did not purchase mulch this year, we did not purch, we, we did not purchase a number of things this year because at the time that we would have normally been purchasing it, um, planting for aesthetic and cosmetic reasons were not. And then plus, given our financial situation, so this year we didn't really, we, we only use what we already had in-house. But I can absolutely get you a comparison, I can go back from the summer of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and, and put something together.
Uh, thank you.
Yes. Um, item number thirty-four, um, and I know Counselor Carney, you had some questions about this and I tried to look into this so we can hold it if you'd like. But pet cremation services, we, um, we partner with them. And I, what I'm getting is that they may be the only game in town, but I can't quite confirm that. But this is to, they offer post-life services for dogs and other small animals. Uh, basically, they come right to us when we have, um, a deceased animal in our freezer. And they come pick it up and then they, um, take it off-site for cremation. Any questions about that?
And, no, I just, I guess, you know, again, I, I, that was sort of my understanding. And again, I, I think we did this a while ago when we RFP'd for it the last time, I would just, you know, I, I, yeah, I mean, if they really are the only ones that are doing this work, obviously, you want to stick with folks that are around and capable of doing it, you know, when we need them to, but I would ask that something like this that in the future we would put out an RFP for.
Okay.
I hope they don't keep me in a freezer.
You wouldn't fit in ours, it's a small one. Uh, and then the last item, number thirty-six is for the ability, again, this is for when we're back up and running. But for the ability for us to purchase those items that we can't get quote for, that we have to get usually in a time-sensitive manner. Um, whether it's, um, a cake for the Rose Society, Rose Day or, um, plates, whatever it may be. But it's, um, five thousand to purchase last-minute items from Wegmans annually. And those are all of my items.
Okay, I'm going to call those ready unless there are any further questions from my colleagues.
Uh, well, go on, President, is that President Hudson? Okay, I, I just, uh, was wondering, uh, as far as the pools opening, Commissioner, when, when are they opening?
So you have two of the pools, Kirk and Schiller, opening a week from tomorrow on July sixteenth. And the following Thursday, you have Anandaga and Thorne opening on July twenty-third.
I, I was just wondering, Commissioner, uh, Counselor Carney, maybe the Parks and Recreation Committee be informed of beforehand. I'm particularly being a, an ex-Parks and Recreation employee, I'm particularly apprehensive about, uh, the security that's going to be supplied as far as these pools opening, uh, knowing the history of the pools.
We have had meetings this week, um, we are having conversations with, um, Snug, the Good Life Foundation, Streetside Addiction Organizations and, um, OGs Against Violence to see if and how they can help out. We also have unfurlowed or are in the process of unfurlowing our recreation staff, this, the staff that were at the centers, you know, the, our staff that have an extremely good rapport with each of those neighborhoods. So our Denise Moore, who was at Kirk Park, you know, to now work at Kirk Park Pool for us, Monday through Friday to help in that aspect. We obviously are having conversations with the police department. But the need and the desire to have a full uniformed police officer on site may not be, um, in the best interest right now. So basically, it's a work in process, in progress right now. I don't have all of the answers, but just know that we're taking it extremely seriously. Um, you know, we want the leisure time provided for our communities, but we're also, um, being diligent about looking at the safety precautions that we can and should take.
I, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and I, I congratulate you on the go-to funding for the other two pools. But I, um, you know, I know that in the past, and, and I'm glad you're getting the neighborhood folks involved as far as putting them on maybe as, you know, to be, uh, sort of a conduit with the neighborhood, uh, children that might, uh, frequent the pool. But I still think we need some sort of police presence there in the pools.
We're trying to have, we're trying to find that happy medium.
Yeah, i- if I can chime in, and this is with due respect to the many names who may be on that list. Uh, and, you know, I have respect for what, what people do in the street to try to curb violence. But with all due respect, some of them may be misleading. You know, they could very easily become victims at the pools themselves. But we have to have police officers there, I don't know what the presence would be like. Uh, but it is, it is a serious misdirection being provided, really to the shame of people who may be looking, you know, for more money opportunity under the auspices of providing security, which is not what they do. Uh, but we got, we got, you know, we can't make that mistake and then have another crisis on our hands on city property. I would much rather that, as Counselor Hogan said, we give more consideration to our police department. And let me be straight, uh, and transparent about it. Police department that's already on the payroll, instead of us paying somebody else to do something that our police department can do. So I just want to throw that out there, but I, you know, I've heard some of the names listed. I understand that people believe the impact that's had in the street is that strong by every name listed, but that is not true. That would, our violence would be down. So we got to be careful with that one.
Counselor Bay, this is the deputy mayor. I, um, had, had a conversation as well with Jimmy this morning about, um, I think, um, the real stakeholders we actually employ. Many of our rec staff, the, the Denise's, the Edmitch's, they are the ones that have really good relationships out in our community. And, um, really doubling down and, and having more reliance on staff that we already employ, who have been in our centers, who know the kids who come to those neighborhoods. So to really double down in that being our first line of engagement. Quite frankly, the thing that those relationships are going to be needed the most for is that because of social distancing, there are going to be like forty-five minute intervals. And all of us can remember when we got in the pool, we didn't want to get out. And so it is going to be more important that those relationships are helping, keeping that traffic moving in and out of those pools. We, um, we're working with Chief Shoff around how, um, police, uh, can respond. Last year, we settled on them actually being assigned, having a, a direct number to our officers to be able to be on site. And they were very. and they were very responsive, very quickly, we're really, I have, I have, I have extreme confidence in our internal staff who spent their lives making these relationships with children and families at those pools.
I, I, I can appreciate that, Deputy, and you know, somebody like Ed Mitchell, who I've known for years, and seen him work for years, yeah, I can vouch for him too. Some of them other names, absolutely not. You know, I just think we have to be careful there, like, none of them, not even Ed Mitchell, has that rapport on the east side, who's that person? You know, I just think we have to make sure we're making right decision, and that we're not spending money, with all due respect, that's not going to turn us, give us any kind of turnover. I'm sure that's being considered, but I'm just stating as much for the record.
Yes, so, so the first names for Shirley Parker, the people that worked in that park, as our staff, they know the kids and they know the families.
Right, right.
But, to Counselor Bay's point, Deputy Mayor, you know, pools open at first, and there'll be kids from all sorts, all over the city, and families from all over the city. And I, I'm sure now, now that I know the Parks and Recreation staff is going to be involved, but they're not going to know everybody. And at times in those pools, you're going to need a police officer sometimes, that's, I just want to put that out there.
Yep, understood.
We will, we will continue to keep you updated as this progress, or this process goes along.
Okay. Okay, all right, those, those are my items, and they're all ready.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President, I have item thirty-seven, five, item thirty-seven through forty-three, police, and forty-four and forty-five are fire. So, we do the fire first, forty-four and forty-five, Chipmunk. Good afternoon, everybody, good afternoon, Counselor Majoke. Item number forty is a, can you hear me okay? Forty-four is to get authorization to use Churchville Fire to service our personal protective equipment, and basically, it's our equipment that we wear into fires, our, our pants, our coats, our hoods, and things like that. And the type of services that they provide, they stitch all of our equipment, if it rips, it tears. It's a third-party vendor that are certified technicians that, once, once our equipment is deteriorated, they put it back to a condition where we can use it again. So, most of our gear, we keep it in service for ten years, so this particular company is a company that we use. So, this is for thirty thousand dollars for this year, and we're asking for a waiver.
Can we talk about this in the committee meeting, Counselors, any questions? All right, Chief, let's move on.
On the next item is number forty-five, and this is for Jerome Fire Equipment to provide repairs and maintenance services for our self-contained breathing apparatus, and that's the apparatus that we use with our facepieces and our air supply when we go into a fire, so we don't have to breathe and smoke. This waiver is for them to provide these services to make sure our equipment is up and running. There's yearly mandated testing that needs to be done on this equipment. Several years ago, we used to do it in-house, probably a decade more ago, but there was a liability of not having a certified technician do it. So, we are meeting all the standards with Jerome Fire Equipment servicing our equipment, and they're the only sole source vendor that can actually service this equipment in the area. Does anybody have any questions for that item number fifty-five?
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselors, have a good day.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief Cecil, item thirty-seven, or anybody from the police department?
Sure, hi, Counselor, this is Joe Cecil, thirty-seven is a request to accept the in-kind donation from Armored One for the class to repair the front of the public safety building for the tune of about forty-seven hundred dollars. I know during the public safety mini, meeting, there was a question about who would pay for the install. I spoke with the county, and the county is willing to take the twelve hundred dollar install. However, as they mentioned, at the end of the year, there's a abstract conciliation, sixty-nine percent city, thirty-one percent county, so we will end up incurring that cost, but upfront, they were, they were willing to take the install.
Question, Counselors? Now, Chief, with, with this, with, with all the donation that we get, in-kind donation, is there, is there, is there a memorandum as to that this is just purely donation, there is no catch the wind, there's, there's no, you know, pat my back and I'll pat your back kind of stuff, to prevent that kind of stuff?
Sure, there, there is not, I mean, we don't, we don't have anything in writing, but we don't, it's pretty much understood that if we accept something, there's nothing given in response. I guess with the glass is simply, they just, they want the publicity of being able to put glass into a police station. And I'm sure they'll get something out of that, but there's nothing that we're giving them in exchange for the glass, or in any case, anytime someone donates anything, do we give anything in response?
So, so there's no, there's nothing in place that, that just, just that gets fined? And I know the intent here, Chief, I know the intent is, is great, is a gift, is, is, you know, is giving to, 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 to the, to the department, which is, is a great thing, but I, I, I think, I don't know what the other Counselors feel, but I, I just think that there should be something in place that gets fined, just say, you know what, this, I don't know what it would look like, but I'm a little bit edgy in terms of just accepting things and nothing gets fined, you know?
Sure, well, Counselor, what we can do is, we could have, one of the, we have Amanda Harrington working for us, she's an attorney, we can have her take a look, and anytime we do accept something, for instance, this glass, it came with, you know, the, what they, they came with the amount of the donation, so it came with an official letter from the Armored One people, we could actually just send them back a letter once we have it created, and do that in every case where it basically is written out, just like you said, that just be advised, there's, you'll receive nothing in return, certainly do something like that.
Yeah, yeah, Counselors?
Counselor Majoke, you moved a little too fast, we need to finish the discussion, the statement about the abstract, and I wanted to ask a question in regards to that.
Okay, go ahead. Is it that item thirty-seven program?
Was, was that item thirty-seven you referred to the abstract, Chief?
Yes, it was, yep.
Um, I, I mean, I guess that's not a lot of money, but when you consider, and I, I'm not even sure if everybody, you know, forgive me if I'm, if I'm being presumptuous, I'm not even sure if everybody is clear on what the abstract is, but it's the bill we get annually from county for shared services, and so, any, any idea of, of what, let, let's say, the police portion of that bill is? You may not have that right off the top of your head, but even if you get that to us, you know, because I know we already have costs that we pay for other shared services, if you will, but I'm just trying to get an idea of where we are, and what this increases our costs to.
Sure, absolutely, Counselor, I would imagine that conciliation occurred for two thousand, already? I can reach out and get it for you, I'm sure, I, I'm sure it's already on record.
Appreciate it.
Counselor Bay, historically, this was a not advantageous deal with the city, because the way that public safety was put together was people paid by the basis of their use of square footage, rather than a fifty-fifty thing. So, when the county moved out, the sheriff, the DA, the jail, we ended up with the bulk of the building. So, we're paying a lot more for that building, because it was constructed that you would pay for the space that you used, not a complete shared use of the property. So, this might need to be re-investigated, because we're paying a lot more for that building than was anticipated originally.
Understood. Understood, yeah, Chief, if you could, appreciate that, Mr. Clark, Chief, if you could, I would appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
That would be great. Any, any, any more question, Counselors? All right, Chief, let's go to item thirty-eight.
Okay, so, item thirty-eight is our contract, it's the, to request to waive the RFP for Camillus Animal Hospital. Camillus Animal Hospital has helped, or treated our canine dogs for what I believe is about twenty years now. They also do Solvay and Camillus, and some sheriffs, and other agencies as well. The vet there is very well, very experienced in working dogs, meaning canines, and how to treat them and get more life out of them. But we've been using them and asking for an RFP for quite some time, because of their expertise. It's for a fifteen thousand dollars.
Did you say they are the only people ride the service, Chief?
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if, only, there, obviously, there's other vets, Counselor, but I think if you put this out, and we're more, more than willing to do that at some point, probably not this time around, because we kind of need the contract, we could put this out, and I think they would win it, based on the experience of the vet that's currently there and out. She has worked with canines for, again, with ours for over twenty years, and other agencies, perhaps just as long.
Counselor Majoke, if you don't mind me asking a question, Chief Cecil, it says that the budget line there is fifteen thousand. Do you guys typically spend close to that, or is that just a, a, a higher? I'm wondering what typical spend is in a year for something like this, and, and, you know, if, if it was just maintenance, it seems, seems rather steep, but I also don't know how many dogs we have, or what kind of veterinary services they need.
Yeah, that's a good question, Counselor, what I'll do is, I'll get that all for you, and get it over to you. Imagine this is our typical expense, that's why we have it in here, certainly, it could be under that, or in some cases, over, if a dog gets injured on a call, or something like that, and needs surgery. But I'll get that, I'll get that in some form, written form, and get that to you.
And try, try, on, on that note around Counselor Driscoll Point, just, see, see, in a say, cause not exceed fifteen thousand, I, I would be curious to know what, what, what the cost was last year and the year before.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, thirty-nine, item thirty-nine is a, another request to waive the RFP for Cedapath Solutions. Cedapath is the one that's put up well over five hundred cameras now throughout the city, and we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars, so they could continue to maintain this, if, the implementation and service, services, and maintenance for those cameras that are already installed throughout the city. Again, we're asking for the RFP, because they're the company that's mostly intimately involved and has the knowledge of these cameras, because they're the ones that install them.
Call, Clark? All right.
Okay, yep, item forty is another request to waive their RFP for Mohawk, that, Mohawk, Mohawk Valley Information Technologies, they're the ones that created our website, and once again, we're asking for fifteen hundred dollars, so they could continue the support and maintenance of the police department's website.
Okay, and, and, and like, like, like item thirty-eight, Chief, could you also, you know, give us, you know, the average cost in the last couple of years, maybe two, you know?
Yep, I will.
Yep, continue.
Okay, so, forty-one, I think is, I don't know if Janet Burke's on the phone, or on this call, I think she's got more info on that one. Or maybe the Deputy Mayor.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, and this is, this is the Street Addiction, the Trauma Response?
Yes.
The Trauma Response Team, or the Street Addiction Institute, told me yesterday, and asked if we could change the name going forward on their contract to Unbelievable Enterprises. I talked to the Corporation Counsel's office, and they asked that we just submit a new letter, so I'm not sure if you've seen the new letter or not, but that, that will be to you, the only change is the, and that'll be to you by Monday.
Wait, what is the name?
I'm, well, it's, I, I didn't know if that's what Chief Cecil was talking about, there's going to be, it says that Addiction Institute is the, is the entity that we are entering into myth, and instead, it's going to be Unbelievable Enterprises, which is the umbrella over the Trauma Response Team, the Street Addiction Institute, and all the other entities with, with the base.
I wasn't aware of that, Counselor Rod, did we, were you aware of that?
We just got the request, Counselor Joe, so Janet just literally got it.
Janet, this is the city clerk, could you make sure we get that letter today, so we can make sure it's drafted properly for Monday?
Absolutely, if the Counselor is, is fine with that, we will.
Other Counselors?
I guess just if somebody can, as long as it's just a name change, I don't think it matters whether they're A, B, C, or Y, X, Y, but if there's some other ramification, that somebody looks at it, then I think that should be explained, but, yeah.
No, I, I think they're trying to consolidate all of their stuff under one umbrella, Counselor Red. It's going to be, you know, the surface of the Trauma Response Team.
All right, so long as it doesn't cost us money, I think I'm straight with it, Counselors.
Yep.
Okay, forty-three?
Sure, Counselor, forty-two is a request to enter into a MOU with Anadag County, I, I'm sorry, Anadag Community College, so we can begin having our academies up there again, there's no cost to us, they're offering up office space, and gymnasium, and whatever else we need to start our very next academy to have it up there.
Okay, and again, we, there's no catch on this one.
Can I ask a question on this?
Madam President.
Chief Cecil, so, our academy, I'm trying to get it straight in my head, because weren't we at one point, we, everybody trained in a centralized location, and then we changed over, what happened?
We, we did, my academy was, well, I don't want to go back that far, but my academy was up at OCC, multiple academies were up at OCC, and then, under Chief Power, there was some type of friction going on, I don't know what it was at the time, but he decided to separate from OCC and the Sheriff's Department, and form the Regional Academy, and start training out of the Public Safety Building.
Okay, so, back to the, okay.
Counselor President, I, yes, Counselor President, I, I, I am so happy that the police are doing this, it is in the best interest of the training, they have the equipment, it's a better facility to train our people, and it is definitely the move we should make. I don't know what the history of the decision made, was made in the past, but this is the right one going forward.
And so, this will be the first year that we're actually going back to OCC?
Our, yes, our next academy, so if it's this year, but I don't think it's going to be, whatever our next academy is, we will be at OCC.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Last one, Chief.
Sure, so the last one is just an amendment to the agreement with Axon for the body cams. This is the contract that incorporates the hundred and thirteen body cams. The only, the really big change here, and Frank Caliva could probably give you more details, but the big change here is we discovered, Frank discovered that we didn't have to match the grant with actual cash, but we could match it with personnel costs of implementing and maintaining the program.
Counselors? All right, Madam President, thank you, Chief, Madam President, that, that will do it for me, they are.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President, I have items forty-six through fifty, all of these items passed the committee after further discussion after the committee meeting, so all my items are. Um, after further discussion after the committee meeting. So all my items are ready unless you guys wanted to have any discussion on any of them. No discussion, so they're already.
All righty, thank you, Counselor Allen.
You're welcome.
With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
A move.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, thanks, Counselors. Thanks.
Thank you, President.
Have a great one.
They're, they're, okay, I'm done.